All right, with that, we will start our special meeting today. It is May twenty ninth, two thousand and twenty four at nine A M. In the Selma City Council Chambers at seventeen ten Tucker Street in Selma, California, nine three six six two. The teleconference phone number is three zero one seven one five eight five nine two. The webinar I D is eight nine one six eight six four five zero zero five. When on the phone, if you wish to address the council during the public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise your hand, and we will select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. Would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Garrett.
Here.
Councilmember Mendez Navarro.
Here.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho.
Here.
Mayor Robertson.
Here. Potential conflicts of interest, any council member has a potential conflict of interest. They now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Agenda changes or deletions to better accommodate members of the public or inconvenience in the order of presentation. Items on the agenda may not be presented or acted upon in the order listed. Additions to the agenda may be added only pursuant to California Government Code. Section five four nine five four dot two B. Oral communications at this time, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any item on the special meeting agenda over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public are asked to limit their remarks to three minutes and direct their comments at the city council only. Our first item today and our only item is a study session, which is a workshop regarding homelessness and unhoused population in Selma.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. Today we have several resource and service providers that serve the city of Selma. Our police chief has worked diligently to bring these resources together and these individuals. And I'll hand it over to him so that he can introduce.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Today with us is Andrew Pareda. Andrew, I hope I pronounced that correctly. Andrew's a special, an outreach specialist with Kingsview, who is contracted with Fresno County to help provide services to community members throughout the county. Next to him is Cynthia with an I, Cynthia Farfan, with she is the program manager at the Selma Map Point, which is located here in Selma. And I'll kind of show you exactly where they're located here soon, shortly. Next to Cynthia is Delphina Vasquez. I know a lot of people know Delphina. She's been part of our community for some time. And she is the program manager of the Selmacom. And I'll get, I'll get you an address for them here. Is that correct, Delphina? I have the address too. So that's on one of the slides. And then to our far left, you all know Jerome and Chief Webster and Mike Con. But to our far left is Dylan McCully. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Dylan is a Fresno County homeless homelessness program manager with, again, with Fresno County. So we first of all, want to thank them all for coming to the table today to talk, talk, talk with all of you, some of our public about the homelessness and what services are provided for that portion of our population. On the, I think the first page was just an introduction. It's pretty self-explanatory workshop to discuss the homelessness through, within Fresno County, more specifically to the city of Selma and its jurisdiction. Right here is a list of service providers. These are service providers that are here in, within our city limits. First is the Fresno County Department of Health Services. That, that location is not just for homeless. It's for any populate, any of our community members that are requesting assistance from or through Fresno County. And that, that location can connect those community members with whatever services that they may be in need of and get them and direct them, those community members to exactly those point of contact so that they can obtain services. Next is Selmacom, and I'm sorry, Fresno County is listed at thirty eight hundred McCall Avenue, Selma, California. The old Thrifties Building for some of us that don't know addresses. Down below is Selmacom, which is located two thousand and one Witson Street here in Selma. And the phone number is listed as eight three six eight one six five. I listed locations, addresses, phone numbers and hours so that if this PowerPoint can be distributed to our community members, they'll have all that information for them and they can go directly to this to obtain that information. And down below is our Selma Map Point. That's located two zero four or five Grant Street here in Selma. And, and there's a phone number and hours as well. I list these locations because these are physical buildings that are identified for our community members that can go and obtain services, ask questions with regards to any issues that they're having or any assistance that they may need. So that's why I only listed those three locations. Oh, okay, but it's in the same building, right? Right next door? Yeah, right next door. She can't miss it. The old Thrifties, the old yellow, not Yellow Mart Bargain Mart it used to be. I think it was the old bargain mart.
But that address is close.
But it's, it's right there.
Thank you for that clarification.
So those are the, the physical buildings. So a little bit to summarize, because there's so many services that can be provided to our community members. It, it, it's endless. But just to kind of summarize some of those services and probably the most kind of most requested services are providing friendly and compassionate service over at the map point. They can help provide needs assessment for community members that are coming in asking for services, whether that be shelter, whether that be, you know, abuse, substance abuse, whether it be mental health. These service providers can provide a needs assessment to get those community members to the services that are most best suited for them. They can assist in identifying creative solutions to address the housing crisis. They can provide referrals to shelter to triage centers if available. They can connect to resources available such as food, clothing, public benefits and employment services. However, one caveat is no providers can guarantee shelter, immediate housing or financial assistance. I think those are things that are kind of identified by the state or availability, correct? On the next slide, how services are provided. So not all of these agencies in front of you, not every, each one of them kind of provide the service in the same manner. But one, one service that is provided through one of these providers is that they actually do a field deployment. They actually go out into the field and connect with these community members that are, who they believe may need or require services. They also educate our community members and with documentations and helping them get or obtain documentation that's necessary for employment or living requirements. Additionally, they attempt to identify housing, especially through the Selma Map Point where, where these community members that are looking for housing can go to. The, the, I think that it's very important, important to note that it's very rare that someone goes in and says, I need housing and they're immediately connected with housing, right? There's so many, so much, there, there's a ton of vetting that has to go through to get and connect someone with housing. Forcing is availability, right? Is, is housing available? And what we're finding out is housing is not so readily available. And then secondly, based on the person's situation, if housing might is available, maybe they're not best suited for that type of housing. And there's so many things that go along with connecting the, the person with the right housing or shelter. On the next slide, if we can talk a little bit about data. All these agencies collect data on how many commuter, community members they are connecting with. And additionally, they have just recently started collecting data on community members that are declining access point engagement. And that's something that wasn't necessarily being collected at the forefront. And I think it's, it's kind of the reality that I'll kind of speak to on the next slide. And that reality is that there are community members that absolutely decline services and do not have mental health and or addiction problems. And that's our reality. There are some people that just choose to be unhoused. Again, we don't have to agree with people's lifestyles, but we have to respect their rights. And, and that's, that's just the reality of, of some of the population. It is, it is by choice. Additionally, there's a shortage, a significant shortage of shelters available. And I think we all know that, but it has to be kind of repeated again because that, that's the reality of it. Also, a majority of engagements identify mental health and addiction problems. That also is true. And, and the difficulty in that is when, when we have community members, just like anyone, whether you have a house, whether you don't have a house, whether you're unhoused. When, when we have community members that have mental health issues and they have an addiction problem, it gets very difficult to treat the mental health issues because of the addiction. So you kind of have to clean up the addiction problem or help with the addiction problem so they can get to the root of the mental health issues. So that becomes an even more impacted scenario, if you will, to, to solve because both of those concerns, there's no quick fix, right? It's years of treatment. It's, it's a treatment that has to be welcomed by the patient or by the community member. So it becomes an enormous challenge to be able to assist with those, with providing those service, services. Additionally, there's an increasing population of homeless that are working and unable to find housing. As we go out and we patrol and we, when we do investigate crime scenes or just outdoing consensual encounters, we're finding that we have homeless that are waking up every morning, going to work and then going home and they're living in a tent somewhere just on the cusp of our city because they can't find housing. They can't find an apartment to rent for a multitude of reasons. But, but that's, that is an enormous reality that's becoming much, much more prevalent, I think, here. And lastly, a huge part of the reduced housing income or the, the reduced low income housing availability has become, because COVID funds have kind of run out, if you will. So during COVID, there was a lot of money that was injected into these programs to provide additional housing. Now that that COVID money has run out, a lot of that housing has not been available. So that has then further impacted the issue of homelessness and, and housing. The next slide, interactions. So I kind of wanted to kind of just tell you a little about of our interactions as we deal with, with our unhoused population. When, when our officers are contacting the homeless, really are the extent of our involvement in helping the, the homeless is directing them to where services available. So we tell them about MAP. We tell them about, you know, Fresno County, the Human Services Building. We tell them if they have, if they're having mental health issues, we, we can get mental health clinicians to come out and help. But really, our, 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 the extent of our involvement is getting them directed to those locations where they can obtain services because we're not professionals at diagnosing, treating the homeless. So it, it's our job to direct them to where they need to go. The reality is if they choose not to go, then that, that's, that's their choice. We can't force people to go and obtain services that, we just can't do that. Secondly, our mental health clinicians response, you know, when we go out to calls of mental health where someone is in a mental health distress, we show up with mental health clinicians. And the purpose that we are there for with regards to law enforcement is to ensure the safety of those mental health clinicians. If those mental health clinicians feel safe, that the atmosphere or the environment is safe for them to be alone, then we leave so that they can have a good organic conversation with those that are experiencing a crisis because they feel more comfortable speaking with someone that's, when, when a uniformed personnel is not there. That's just the reality of it. And, and until they have that conversation with that mental health clinician and have a good, true conversations of why they're experiencing crisis, then they're going to be able to get help. Sometimes just by having uniformed personnel there, they don't want to have that conversation. It, it's just like when you're driving down the freeway and you see a highway patrolman show up. I mean, you could be doing sixty five, doing the speed limit, you still kind of let off the gas because you're like, oh my gosh, right? It's just, it's, it's something that's embedded in all of this, right? That's what we do. That's why we stop a lot of cars because we want those lights and sirens going because it, it makes people think twice about speeding or committing criminal acts, right? Visibility helps reduce crime. But in this instance, when someone's experiencing a crisis, sometimes our presence can elevate the situation. And sometimes our removal from a, a location can de-escalate a situation or a crisis. So, you know, if we're able to do that, we always try to do that because it, it really is connecting that patient with those, with those services. And that's really the, the biggest goal when dealing with mental health. Additionally, enforcement with criminal activity. The police department enforces violations of law across the board, whether someone is unhoused, whether someone has a home, whether someone is traveling, some, whether someone is visiting or working in our community. We do not, we do not specialize or focus on any one group. We, 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 when our officers are out on patrol, they are looking for anything that they feel is significant to take action, right? And sometimes we have to prioritize. You know, if, if someone runs a red light in front of us and then we get a call of a domestic violence in progress, well, odds are we're gonna have to let that, that, that red light runner, violator go and go deal with the domestic violence because at that moment, that's the priority is dealing with that, is dealing with that more, more serious crime at that locate, at that time to get that victim safe and then get her services. Him or her, I should say, I'm sorry. So that's really kind of, I think it's very important to, to understand that, that law enforcement as a whole does not directly deal or provide services to the homeless. Other than this is where you can go, here's some information. If you want us to call out and we have a provider that's willing to come out, then we'll do that and stand by if we can. But, but that's, that's just the reality of it because it's not a law enforcement function to deal with the homeless unless they're committing a violent, violation of law, right? So additionally, educating and collaborating with property owners on illegal encampments. We work with property owners to make sure that if, if they need help or education on, you know, people that are on their property illegally, we can help them with that and tell them this is the process. Or if they have, you know, whatever, whatever the situation is, we, that is another way that we interact with the homeless in a kind of indirect way, if you will, right? Educating our, our property owners and business owners. And lastly, we work with sort of service providers when feasible. And I, I have a little caveat there with the, in parentheses, about the uniform. Law enforcement could deter engagement. Again, some of people, a lot of people in crisis at times do not want law enforcement officer on site because they don't feel safe having a conversation. So if we have the ability to remove ourselves so that they can have that conversation and they can connect with services, then that's what we'll do. Because the reality is, it's the, the issues that person may be experiencing and, and the resolve is going to be a very long-term process, right? It's not going to get fixed in that immediate moment. So if, if we have the availability and our service providers feel safe, we'll then remove ourselves from that environment so that they can provide those services to those patients or to those community members. Um, on the next, the next slide, these are statistics that have been collected through Kingsview and their outreach specialists. Now, I don't know if this is MAP as well, Andrew. Just your outreach. So I think the most important kind of portion of this slide to note is that of, of the forty six people that were contacted by the outreach specialist and path, forty five or forty six, one of them wanted shelter or there was shelter available. Forty five interactions, there was no shelter available. And of those thirty six, of those forty six actually wanted shelter. So five of them declined and four already had shelters. So that means they had shelter and they were out in the community and being contacted by path and the outreach specialists. So again, that kind of, it's not a huge number, but the reality is there are, there are community members that just don't want services. And, and if they're declining services, you know, it, it really makes it difficult for us to kind of help them, right? It's hard to help someone doesn't want help. And, and that's just the reality of it. So I kind of have given you just some very kind of, I don't know, surface level information. These specialists can go into a lot more data and, and into a lot more questions because this is, this is what they do. Regards to law enforcement, again, we, we, we don't really get in depth with the homeless and, and the unhoused because that's, our job is not to push our morals, ethics and values on them, right? Our job is to enforce laws. And even some laws, morals, ethics and values don't play into the law, right? And that's, that's a very difficult concept for people to comprehend. But, you know, I've gone into homes before where it's filthy and, but there's food in the fridge and there's a roof on the, on the, on top of the house and there's clothing. I wouldn't raise my children in that environment, but I can't push my morals, ethics and values on. I wouldn't raise my children in that environment, but I can't push my morals, ethics and values on to someone else, right? I just have to ask myself, are the legal requirements being met? And and that's really with regards to law enforcement, homelessness, that's what we do, right? If we show up. And there's no laws being broken, it it's makes it very difficult for us to take any action and there really shouldn't be no action taken. Uh if no laws are being violated. So that's kind of just summary and then just a very kind of surface level information to kind of kickstart. This conversation is workshop because I think that all of you have some questions, as does the public. And I think that we've brought together uh some of the best providers in Fresno County, if not the best providers in Fresno County to have. Expertise much beyond my my uh knowledge base and they can help us answer some of these questions uh for us. So with that, if anyone does have any questions for me, or does anyone have any questions for me?
I've got one.
Yes, sir.
So first, I want to say thank you for your presentation, chief, and appreciate all the hard work that you put into coming up with this. I think one of the things that occasions this is lots of people are asking about homelessness issue in Selma. It's not get, it doesn't appear to be getting better, appears to be getting worse. And people are asking and they're coming to to me and I'm sure they're coming to other council members and that, I think, occasioned this workshop today. So that we can better understand this issue because we've had money. Put towards homelessness in the last few budgets, but it really hasn't gone anywhere, it hasn't done anything. So I'm hopeful that we can, you know, use our platform as a city council. To actually help the homeless issue and to help the homeless and the unhoused and to help this uh it resolve this in some way. And I'm glad you did this presentation because um in terms of law enforcement, you said there's really not much we can do if we ask somebody. You know, do you want help and they refuse it? I don't think any, nobody I've talked to has an issue with that. The question I've seen is. What if, you know, they're camped there and and they're on a public place and you tell them. Hey, you know, you you're gonna have to clear out and the legal response in the past has been, well, do you have a shelter here? I mean, there are lots of legal defenses to that. And from what I understand, this is very surface level, as you say, because I'm an insurance agent, right? I don't get into the law, I'm not, this is, you know, this is something that I do as a representative of the citizens. And I believe there's a Supreme Court case out there called Grants Pass versus Johnson or something, Jones Smith. But it has to do with homelessness and it's a very important landmark watershed case that will allow. The police, the PD, law enforcement to clear homeless encampments in the future. Even if they say, leave me alone, I don't want help. And maybe the city attorney could weigh in on this, maybe the police chief could weigh in this.
City attorney, it's in court, right?
Yeah, the Grants Pass case is related to a anti camping ordinance, basically. Which i- it's along the lines of what what you're stating, the Supreme Court hasn't made a decision on it yet, should be coming. You know, essentially in June, sometime in June. So I'm, we're keeping an eye on that case because it's going to be applicable to all the cities we represent. Everyone's been asking about it, so we are keeping an eye on it. But yeah, it it will be a landmark decision one way or another that will really, um it'll go further than the Boise case as far as. Really um helping the cities understand what they can and can't do in regards to enforcing camping um for the homeless population.
And potentially it could expand law enforcement or code enforcement's role in terms of some, what they can do.
Correct.
If they encounter homeless encampments and their interaction with those homeless encampments, if I'm not mistaken.
Y- yes, sir, and then and then whatever the the Supreme Court uh rules and their there's advisements, right? I'm sure there'll, it won't just be a yes or no, yes, you can, you can. I'm sure there'll be some type of services that will be need need to be rendered prior to or some availability to shelter. I I don't know, I I can't, it's the Supreme Court, it is, we don't know what they're gonna say, but we all.
From my perspective, it's, it just shows, I apologize. It just shows how important this issue is, that it is, it is at the Supreme Court now, that the issue is really important. It needs to be addressed and I think the Supreme Court decision is going to provide a little more guidance, one way or the other. And I think it shows why we're having this workshop and I'll bet a bunch of city councils are having this across the country.
I I would absolutely agree and I and I believe that 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 case is at the Supreme Court because cities are becoming handcuffed in how they deal with this. This societal issue, right? And and our community members are demanding some resolve. But the reality is, and and I've kind of said this before, is we can't violate someone's rights because it's just, it's unconstitutional, right? So we're all eagerly waiting for the Supreme Supreme Court's ruling and then how they. What they rule out, right? And how we work around those those uh that that ruling and that law and and how it's interpreted by them. Because really, they are the the kind of guiding light, or they are Supreme Court, right? We we constantly watch the the Ninth Circuit with regards to law enforcement to see how they're ruling. And it doesn't mean that. That a law has changed, but we may change the way that we administer certain things based on what the Ninth Circuit is is looking at. To help us kind of stay ahead of, you know. Progressive laws or or how things are kind of changing. Because the law is is a living and breathing kind of uh. Document, if you will, for lack of a better term, right? And we're always trying to interpret best best practice, right? So, yeah, we're all very eagerly waiting. But I I kind of wanted to kind of hit on something you said earlier and about monies and. What I will say is, it was funny, a little after we identified today, we were gonna have this this workshop. I I couldn't sleep at night, that happens pretty often, being a chief of police. You hear a siren and you're you're out of bed because you're like, oh, my gosh, the phone's gonna go off and I gotta get up and take a shower and. But I I. Called a City of Angels. And it was focused on the homeless issues and concerns in the city of Los Angeles. There's actually two parts to it. And I I kind of listened to what the city. Much like the city of Fresno, they've they've invested. Not hundreds of million dollars uh to create housing for the homeless yet. Can you hear me okay? Okay, so, um. You know, the city of Fresno, city of Los Angeles, those are just two cities that have invested tens, if not hundreds of millions of dollars to create housing for the homeless. Yet those cities still experience uh this concern, right? I don't know, so. I think that the homeless is is not so much anymore going to be a point in time concern, it's going to be a long term concern. That will plague all of our communities, or not plague, I shouldn't say, that is going to affect all of our communities. And and I think that by educating all of our community members, we're going to be much more um understanding of the scope of this. Societal concern, if you will, right? Because it's it's uh, you know, I remember as a young law enforcement officer getting called out for suspicious person in the neighborhood. And when our dispatcher asked him, why was this person suspicious, their response was because of his race. And I, as a good law enforcement officer says, yeah, okay, thank you, and then we hang up the phone because. We're not gonna go somewhere because someone is walking in a neighborhood and the mere point that their race makes them suspicious. Is is not, is not. That's not conducive to good law enforcement practice, right? And with our homeless, because they're homeless, doesn't mean that we can target their their that population, right? We enforce laws. On everyone, whether you're visiting our community, whether you live in our community, whether you have a house, don't have a house, drug addiction, no drug addiction. We enforce laws on everybody the best that we can with the resources we have. And I just think it's it's uh, I just want our community members to be mindful of that. We want to do our best to provide the best law enforcement services for our community. And I know that our personnel have done that, they work tirelessly. But what we can't do is we can't violate people's rights and I just, I I know I keep saying that, I just, I just think it's very important that I say that again. As we talk about this this societal concern. And if you have any more questions for me, mayor or council members?
You know, going back to what you're saying, you're you're stating that, you know, the homeless have rights, right? And 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 I I agree, but for our residents and and you say we can't pinpoint them because they're homeless. But the question is that our residents bring to us is, well, yeah, they have the right to stand there, they have the right to park their carts there, they have the right to do that. But. In policies, and this is kind of what like the the nut and bolts of what I want to get to is that, you know, as they stand there, as they're in the park and they're sitting there, you know. I'm not gonna stereotype anybody, but there is facts that maybe we do find needles, maybe we do find things like that. What do we have in our city, and this is just a discussion overall? What do we have in the policymaking that we can use or can we or can't we have any policies? Because at the end of the day. It is right that we give them the right to be there and be be at the park and be walking, do what they have. But what rights do we have through the health of perspective of our citizens, of overall people?
I'm I'm glad you asked, Councilor Triel. So the one thing that we can do, just because they can um congregate or whatever the case be in a public place, doesn't mean they can break the law. So, you know, there's no smoking in our in our parks, right? So if someone is smoking, they they gotta leave or they gotta put out the cigarettes, right?
Or using our.
Right, yeah, so what we can do, we do, you know, if they're if I I on, me personally, on occasion, I've gone to the parks and there's litter everywhere. So I say you can pick up the litter or you can get a ticket, whatever, whichever you choose, right? And we can do those things um to kind of enforce those laws because you can't litter, we have an ordinance that says you can't litter, right? So we do the things that we can. But if someone's just standing there, then then, you know, we can go and have a conversation with them. Like we do with a lot of of our community members, we have conversations. If someone is doing something that they shouldn't be doing and they know it in their head, even though they're not physically doing it, a lot of times they'll just turn and walk away. And and if someone isn't doing anything wrong, then they'll engage us and have a conversation. Or some people just don't want to talk to law enforcement, they'll just, I don't want to talk to you. And you're like, okay, you know, so but but the things that we can do, for instance. I was in the city of Fresno getting a haircut and across the street was. It looked like a a car with somebody that was living out of their car. And I asked the barber, hey, man, what's going on with that car? And he said, yeah, man, he'll he'll sit up here and then three days later, he'll move it down the street, then three days later, move it over across the street. And I'm like, so that's someone that knows the laws and says, okay, I can park here for seventy two hours and then I move it. But we can go as law enforcement if the vehicle's been there for seventy two hours and let them know, hey, your vehicle's been parked here for seventy two hours, you've got to move it, right? And you've got to move it substantially, right? So I mean, we we do the things that we can. But but that, again, we do that for, I'm sure you get a lot of complaints from our community members, we deal with all of our community members, vehicles parked on the roadway for seventy two hours.
What do you have, and this is because we're having the discussion. I see the Fresno County Health Department, Selma Com, Selma MAP. Do you, as the chief and the law enforcement here in Selma, do you have a interaction with them and do their, does their data go to you? Or do we, the city of Selma, have any, and are we are we collecting any data?
We we do not collect data at the city of Selma on on our.
That's a, I mean, for me, that's a, not a concern, but a good point to start because at the end of the day, this is our community and we need to. Maybe as we talk here, we start gathering what information we do need to to start gathering and and getting things together so we can know. Knowing that there's, you know, thirty seven people have requested for housing, but there isn't. Or forty one percent, forty one persons out there that are homeless and thirty seven requested it. That's good data for us as the leadership here, so I'm just wondering, maybe it is, maybe it would be a good focal point where we get our people to get connected and start carrying that data ourselves also.
Yeah, yes, sir, and that's why we're here today is to kind of get direction from you all to how how, you know. Based on what you say and what you hear, right? You can determine what 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 level of service or or how you want to kind of assist in in. Our our unhoused population with obtaining services. And that's that's what we're here for, is to get direction from all of you.
Chief, I have a question. I'm glad that, you know, we brought this important sub uh topic to our city because we all know that homeless is. A very serious problem, not just in Selma, but throughout the whole state of California. And this definitely brings dialogue that we have our resources, folks here, that we're trying to start. You know, coming together and creating better resources. However, we still have concerns for our community, our businesses. Our citizens here in Selma and for their safety. Because we can't turn an eye in regards to what our citizens are facing. And some of these individuals are very, very violent. I've witnessed it myself, just going to the meeting on Friday, last Friday for the revitalization, downtown revitalization. And there was three officers at the park taking in some people because it seems like. They were, there was some domestic violence going on. And after that, I strongly believe that police officers' presence makes a difference. It really does, and I've heard it from other cities. And I've witnessed it at an event that an individual stated she was homeless. And she said, if it wasn't for that officer that saved my life. I will thank him for the rest of my life because that was my turning point to get cleaned up. So I don't agree that officers' presence. Is not going to help these individuals, maybe they're they're afraid, sometimes that's what they need. But I think that is gonna help, not just. The homeless, but our citizens as well. And I'm not saying you guys are not present, but I'm just saying that more of a presence, being at our parks, being at. Events, being at the schools makes a difference, it really does. And. That's what our community needs to see because. I've heard it over and over, when you have. Homelessness, people hanging out all over our downtown, our parks. Or you're gonna not, developers that come driving by are not going to say, oh, no. Let's just keep going to the next city because they have an issue there. I mean, we gotta face reality. But this is why we are here today, because we are going to finally start the dialogue. And have our resources help us. What more can we do? I'm looking at your timeframe. And I know Delphina does a great job feeding feeding the homeless. And helping them with other resources, but what do we do, what do they do after three o'clock? After three o'clock is where they're out hanging out. What about our kids that are having practice at the parks? They can't practice because they're afraid, their families are afraid. I had an issue with families that they can't even take their kids to our library because it's, all the homeless are on the computers. And I get it, I mean, they have rights to be on there for two hours, I called, I found out. They have the right and you can't take that away from them, but. I mean, this is, this is what it's coming to. And I definitely do think that we have to start looking at other resources, what can Selma do? To do a better job because if that means bringing, I mean, we we have to look at some kind of shelter. Some kind of transitional housing. I mean, I know I've, we've talked about it, Delphina's got some great ideas, you know, so. But I get it, it takes money. But, you know, that's that's where it's at, that's really where it's at. The other thing is, we're using the, let me ask you, we're using the police department. As a cooling center. Right? Don't you guys use that one? Office or uh community center as a cooling center? Because we couldn't use the uh senior center. Well, let me ask, how many homeless people were going there?
We did not keep track.
Probably none?
Probably none.
Yeah, probably none. Because they're not gonna feel comfortable. That's, they're not gonna be comfortable going there. But they'll be comfortable probably going to a community center. Or a transitional housing commu-, you know, that provides resources. They'd probably be a little more comfortable.
I would agree.
Okay. I mean, just, those are just my questions.
Anybody else from council?
Comments?
Comments?
Yes, I have, um, I have some questions and some comments. First, let me say thank you to everyone that is in attendance today. The homelessness. Issue is not just in California, it's nationwide. The homelessness um issue is not just in California, it's nationwide. Um, at a previous council meeting, I provided stats of what that is. And um I had a question regarding the timeframe of this forty six um unhoused individuals that were interviewed. What was the timeframe on that?
So that's beginning of July first, twenty twenty three, up until this month.
So July twenty twenty three?
July first, twenty twenty three, yeah.
This month, which is May twenty twenty four. And so we have forty six individuals. Um, so with MapPoint and maybe with King's View as well. Um, is King's View part of the COC, the Continuum of?
Yeah, we're we're part of FM C O C, we're funded through Fresno County. Um, yeah, like I, like I, like uh Chief Alvarez says, we provide services to the unhoused and try to get them to any kind of shelter, work programs, sober living programs, pretty much anything utilizing anything in in Fresno County. Uh lately, I've been referring everybody to Set Free Church as a sober living program. Um, got a couple of bites here in Fresno and and in Orange Cove, so.
Perfect. The other question is, um, as part of King's View and part of uh MapPoint, are um, does anyone there have access to the H M I S program?
Yes, I do.
You do? Okay. So then you're able to court and you do as well? Okay. And that's the um HUD manage HUD homeless management information system, H M I S. Um, and so with that, then obviously the the coordinated entry um comes into play and all of that. So I'm I'm looking at the numbers and I don't know if I'm doing the math right or not, but we're we're a population of about twenty five thousand people. And so if we have forty six individuals in the last year, eleven months or so, um, that's zero point zero zero one eight four percent. So um even though we may see them gathered all the time, that is not even, I mean, not that it's the number is, we're not even at one percent of of the homeless population. Um, so I think that's pretty good. And and the fact that we have, you know, resources here is great. The the issue is, and I and I'm glad that um Councilmember Garrett brought it up, was, you know, transitional housing. Um, uh permanent supportive housing, some type of housing. Here in Salma, there's nothing available. And so one of the things, and I and I'm glad that we're having these conversations, is one of the solutions would be, how do we bring that type of housing here? Um, because, and we have to have, we we can't have the NIMBYism either. You know, we can't say not in my backyard. Like, yeah, if we have a problem, let's fix it, but I don't want it in my backyard. And so um I know that um I worked for Fresno Housing Authority for twenty three years. And right before I left, we were at probably six different permanent supportive housing um properties. And they're still growing, right? They're still um converting some of the hotels into uh permanent supportive housing. And so we need to have those type of resources here. I work real close with the Fresno can um Fresno Madera Continuum of Care currently. And I know that the, again, the issue is not just here, the issue is everywhere, but the problem is that there's no housing. Um, there are developers out there. I know RH Home Builders is a really good one as well that provides housing. And so I think this is a great start and a great conversation now. Um, but the solutions are the ones that we need to, you know, come up with now, and the partnerships need to be there. Um, with the permanent supportive housing, those come with services. Those come with, you know, caseworkers that will help the individuals to make sure that their transition um into, they're able to transition. There's policies, it's a moving, moving policy. Um, which basically, once they're no longer needing those services, then they go and they can transition into like regular housing. So I think that, again, these are great conversations that we're having today and we just need to work on the next steps. And again, the next steps would be working to to build, you know, something that we can um have here in Salma to be able to say, yep, we have, you know, twenty beds that we can go ahead and get these thirty five people that are, you know, um n- n- need to get them off the street. So thank you very much and thank you, Chief, for um all your hard work.
Hey, if I might go off of uh what you just said here. Um, that's kind of the biggest uh request from the unhoused community here in Salma and and anywhere um in these rural communities is, why is there anything here for me to get help? I don't feel comfortable going to Fresno, that's foreign to me. I don't feel safe in Fresno. You know, this is my home, why can't I get help here? Um, so, like you said, having this discussion is is a good launching point for us to kind of see what we can do, you know, at a city level to to help provide services for these unhoused individuals. Um, because like I said, they're 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 our community, you know? Um, and we gotta, we gotta help out our community in some sort of ways. Um, and then going back off your your um question earlier, Mayor, you were saying about how to kind of get these encampments out of the area. Uh traditionally, um, law enforcement is supposed to come and put a notice into the ground, gives them X amount of days until they are to vacate the area. And then either city or PD comes and cleans up that, yeah. Um, so kind of something to keep in mind there.
Like eviction?
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah, like home inspectors, I mean, they go out, if you're building like an A D U or something, they'll go out. If you're not building it right, they won't let you continue. Should probably be, the policy should be uniformly applied towards everyone who's
Right.
putting up a dwelling.
Right. And I unfortunately tell them, you know, because it hinders our work when we try to give them an I D voucher. And then, you know, I usually ask, name me three areas because by the time I go out there, they get cleaned up and they're like, oh, we had to move. So I tried generally to tell them, if you don't see a notice on the ground, tell them, come back, give me one. So it can help me give you your documentations or um anything in the future. But, yeah, that's something to kind of go off of your question.
Just to piggyback on that, tho- those encampments, uh there's a difference whether it's on a public right of way or it's on private property and how we deal with those encampments. So I just kind of wanted to make sure that's clear. It's it's not one process for that type of a concern. It's whether it's public or private property, it will determine how we can, how we address that encampment.
Chief, could I ask you, since you brought that up, when it's on private, how quickly can the officer remove the encampment?
If it's on private property, the officer doesn't move the encampment.
Well, I mean.
So what what I think, dependent, and and again, there's no, hey, if it's on private property, there's a process, right? It's dependent on the circumstance, right? It, in some circumstances, the property owner may have to go through the entire eviction process. In which case Fresno County serves the eviction, much kind of what um Andrew alluded to. And then this, the property owner, nine times out of ten, would then come in and have someone remove the property. And then you gotta put it in storage for X amount of days and there's there's a, there's a process to it. So again, that's, you know, every kind of situation is unique and and we'll we'll have a different process to it. So it's it's hard to capture that, okay, this is it and then this is what you do, right? Because ev- every situation is unique.
Okay.
You know, we've seen a lot of encampments at the at the off ramps. That's where they tend to gather in Salma and Caltrans comes in. And they don't issue eviction because it's a safety issue, because a car could come out and could take that whole group of people who are camped there out. So they're able, I, from what I understand, to just come in and clear it out, you know, when they send their their maintenance crew down to Salma.
Correct.
Which is not, you know, all the time because they're busy too.
Well, and we email Caltrans every day until we get those issues resolved because we are having problems, especially right now. Our concern is, you know, starting fires because of the dry grass and vehicles that are, if you watch the news this morning, there was a vehicle in Dota that caught fire and a hundred acres just uh sprung up in into 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 fire and ashes. So, I mean, those are, those are the genuine concerns. And if you have a homeless person that is sleeping on the side of the freeway in the middle of an embankment and that and that brush catches fire, it he's gonna be hard pressed to get out in time. So it's thinking ahead of those things and that's why we email Caltrans. Uh, because unfortunately, that unhoused person isn't thinking about that or just doesn't care. And our our job is to protect those that uh sometimes from themselves, so.
Um, yes, thank you uh for coming, the service providers. What I'd like to know is what actually each group provides for the people, what, you know, for the resources. Because I, you know, names here and all the other stuff, it doesn't tell me exactly, you know, like Delfina, I know she works, you know, with her group and I'd like to hear a little bit more about that as each group, okay?
Are we gonna do a presentation from each group?
Yeah.
Are you guys prepared to do that?
I don't have a presentation ready, but I can tell you what we do.
Yeah.
Um, no, Mayor, I brought the the group here just to answer any questions you may have. I would I, the information I provided you is ver- again, a very surface level. Um, kind of caption of what they provide, they can go into more.
Yeah, there's a caption basically be.
I just, I didn't ask.
I actually do not know who to send it to, see?
I know. Um, so my name is Andrew Pareda. I'm the team lead outreach uh uh specialist for King's View, the PATH program. Um, we have two programs. We have the um Stars PATH Outreach for the rural community. And then we have our Metro for Fresno and Clovis area. Um, we provide uh food, water, clothing, um replacement of any documentation. That's uh dr- um I D, not driver's license, birth certificate, social security. We will provide transport to those areas if they need a ride to the D M V. We usually take them to Reedley or Fresno um to obtain those documents. Um, and then, you know, giving out any, giving out any kind of resources. So whether that be Salma MAP, Delfina, Salma Com, any kind of work program, that Salvation Army, sober living programs, Teen Challenge, Set Free Church. Um, just kind of overall, giving them those resources to to get into anything to get off the streets. Um, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Hmm.
Do you have a card or all of you maybe provide some in- information so we know how to to reach you? In case, you know, we get contacted by the citizens?
Of course.
You guys are done?
Of course.
Thank you.
Everybody, my name is Cynthia. I'm the program manager for the uh King's View MapPoint here in town. Um, so essentially, what we do are similar services to what Andrew just mentioned. Um, the main difference is that they do outreach, so they go in person where the um unhoused uh individuals are. For our office, we do actually have to wait until uh individuals come in. Um, so essentially, they come in, we do an initial screening on them that consists of different questions that cover every, anything from physical health, mental health, uh substance abuse, anything like that. Once that initial screening is completed, we're able to kind of come up with a plan of the different services that we can help them get connected to. So anything from um domestic violence, uh mental health, food assistance, um, anything like that, we're able to figure out what different program we can get them connected to. And then es- essentially, the role of the navigators, which are the individuals that are performing these initial screenings, their job is to make sure that they're uh navigating them through all these different programs um within Fresno County. Um, so we do assist any individual that is uh within Fresno County. The only uh requirement is that they are Fresno County resident. Um, so whether they're unhoused, they're living with family, they uh have a home, anything like that, as long as they show up to our office, they come in, complete that initial screening, we're able to go ahead and assist them. Um, a lot of times, the different services we can do there in office, whether it's like uh paperwork, uh setting them up an appointment for um a doctor, anything like that, we're able to do in office. If it ever gets to the point where we have to connect them to a different program, we make sure that we get all that information for them so that they don't leave the office without knowing what they have to do. Um, and then we just make sure that they do follow back up with us to make sure that they do get the the service and we're able to um successfully get connected. Um, one of the other things is we are part of the FM C O C, so we are an access site. We're able to place individuals and help them navigate through that different process. Um, one of the barriers, though, is that uh we don't, we have a lot of individuals that don't tend to follow up, um, which we try to urge them to because that that is very essential to try to get them connected to these programs that are essentially gonna get them housed as well. Um, so I think the the whole shelter thing, um, we offer the shelters that are in Fresno, but a lot of them are not open to that because they want to stay within town. Um, so, yeah, essentially, that's what we do is uh we navigate them and make sure that they don't leave our office without any questions unanswered.
So just to clarify, there are beds available, but they're in Fresno?
Yes.
For folks who who want them. Would you arrange transportation too?
Yes, and we provide transportation as well. So especially for our uh unhoused population, if they don't have any form of transportation, um, we do have our vehicle available where we do have to make sure, for shelters specifically, we have to make sure that they are actually gonna go in though. Um, because the last thing that we want to do is to take them to a different city and uh leave them unhoused out there. So we make sure that they have a bed available and that they are gonna actually be able to go in. So whether it's doing a referral or making sure that they're actually gonna go into that bed, then yes, we can arrange transportation either through our uh vehicle that's available. If not, we connect with uh with PATH as well.
And is that to transitional housing or is that to intermediate housing or how long can they stay where you were from?
It kind of depends. So for the the shelter.
Their needs.
Yeah, so for the shelters, we're also able to uh transport to rehab, anything like that. As long it is to get a specific service, we're able to provide transportation.
Thank you.
Hello, everybody. God bless you guys. So, uh, Salma Community Outreach has been uh doing, working with the homeless for for quite some time now. So when we got the first initial grant called Rapid Rehousing, uh that is to house the homeless um and to help them, it's up to, it's a one year, uh can be up to an eighteen month program. Um, so that is one of the first initial goals. We actually are an access site. We have H M I S access. We are an access site. And so we are not just a connector dot, you know, sending them into other resources, but we are also able to help them get housing, get that housing that they need. Um, so we work with them on D M V vouchers. We have to get them completely doc ready, what we call doc ready, which is their birth certificate, their I D. We have also the vouchers that were able to do that for them. So that now it's, it serves two purposes. One is to get them housed, um to get them qualified under our program. And the other is to get them job ready. You know, one of the things that we are doing is we are helping them uh just reset their mind. Uh, it's not just about housing them, it's not just about feeding them, it's not just about giving them a shower. It's about helping them reset their mind. And so that has been, I think, through the years that I've learned the most, is how can I help these people reset their mind? Because I can put them in a house and we do that. Uh, and I went to go visit one of our homeless and the tent was in the living room with dirt and I was so shocked. And I could not believe my my eyes. And I said, what are you doing? And the response changed the way I did everything. He said, this is where I feel safe. And so that changed how I began to do things. I have to help them, not just house them. We can do that. You know, Salma, as Salma Community Outreach industry, we just renewed our grant. Now we are not just a subcontractor through West Care, but we actually have, are carrying our own grant. And we were able to bring in an additional grant. So we now have Rapid Rehousing, which is to house the homeless, right? But we also have diversion, and that is to keep them from being homeless. So what we're seeing right now in our office is we're seeing a lot of people coming and are going to be homeless. So our job is to keep, you know, to plug the hole. You know, so that we're dealing with the homeless, but let's plug the hole as well in stopping people from becoming homeless. And by saying that, I'm talking about families. I know that when we say homeless, most people think about a sign, you know, the one holding the sign. You know, give me work, you know, so that I could eat, right? That's not, that's not what I'm talking about. Yes, we have that situation. And those are the ones Chief is talking about that don't really want help. So what do we do with those? We help them by feeding them, by keeping them clean. We give them showers. We give them hygiene, we give them a place to come and rest their feet, even to charge their cell phones. Um, something as simple as using the restroom and not getting kicked out for that means a lot to people, that dignity. Uh, when they come in to our office or our church and our ministry, they get served. And through that love, we have been able to transform and reset their minds. There are people that I've been working with for six months, seven months, a year, and all of a sudden, they're like, you know what, I'm ready. I'm ready. But why? Because we went through the, the fact that they don't have anybody to care about them. You just want to shuffle them to the next location, get out of my way. And they're people. They're people who have fallen short. Chief talked about mental health. I'll tell you, a lot of it is not just because of their mental health, it's because they fell through the cracks. What happened is their home care provider, whoever used to take. What happened is their home care provider, whoever used to take care of them or made sure they took their medicines, has either died or something happened where there was a disconnect. Now there's nobody to give them their medicines. The medicine's finished. They, their, everything is stolen, right? Their medical, their ID, everything is stolen. So now there's only one way to do it and that's called self-medicate. That's called meth. That's what they begin to do. And once they've been on the street for over a year, that's even harder. That's even harder to get them off because now the body, God created an amazing temple, it adapts. And so they begin to adapt to this. So we have to not just give them a place to live. We have to give them a way to reset their mind. And that is so important. This is why we have had so much success. The people that we have housed are still housed. You don't hear about them anymore because they're housed. I know some of you here might remember Amanda because Amanda was homeless for 20 years on full-blown meth, prostitution, selling drugs. Amanda is fully housed, completely restored. Why? Because we helped Amanda reset her mind, right? You gotta, you can take the person out of the homelessness, right? Out of the situation, but now you gotta take it out of their mind. And so that is a big thing that we all must understand. As we're going forward in this, we need to understand how to help them complete, or else the one-year program, it's gonna finish, you know, Rapid Rehousing, one year, I could pay the rent for one year. And then what good is it if they're back on the street? So through that time, we are case managing them to help them. And I'll tell you what, a big part of that is Jesus. A big part of that is Jesus, you know? So when they accept, I can never say, you have to, you have to, because I can't. But they always know that, hey, we're open seven days a week. We are a church, a ministry, an office that is open seven days a week. And we feed them every single day. We provide showers twice a week. But here's the biggest thing. We love them. We love them. And when they mess up, they come and they'll go to the altar and fall on their face and cry because they want to get off drugs. But until their mind is reset and they get ready, for instance, all of you guys here might know Isaac Muniz. I know the Chief probably does. He's one of our, you know, homeless forever. He finally made a decision. I'm ready. I'm ready. I want to get out of here. So what did we do? We put him into a rehab program because he's not ready for housing. He needs to get cleaned up. So our job is connect the right dots to that specific situation. And from there, I tell them, look, when you come back, come and see me. I'm here and I'm always gonna be here and then I'll help you with the next part. So that's important. We've got to, we've got to understand how to get them, not just get them housed, but how to keep them housed. That's what's important. We absolutely need shelter, a place, you know, a place that we can put them while we go in and work with them. While we go in and help them reset their mind. Some of these people are so traumatized. You know, 20, right off the bat of the people that you're saying numbers on rape, molested as a child, as a child, given up for adoption. So that trauma, they're trying to cover it up. So we need to help them reset their mind. It's not that they don't want help. It's that we have to help them get there. And so what we do, that's just one of the things that we do. We are HMIS. We are your access site. We are your firewall. When new people come in, I'm working with a man right now that came from Arizona. I'm like, why are you here? You know, and he said, well, you know, I needed a change, but now I'm homeless. Said, well, how can I get you help? I said, if I send you back to Arizona, would that help you? He said, I don't have money. Said, no problem. I'm gonna get you a one-way ticket. So what do we do? We try to get them connected. We connect. We call it a soft handoff. I call over there, who will receive them over there? You know, brother, sister, family. By doing that, we've eliminated that person from here and also resolved their problem. We didn't just push them off to somebody else. That's not the solution. Like Chief said, my, his job is to abide the law, make people to make sure that, you know, the law is enforced. As a pastor of this community, my job is to get Jesus into them. I am fortunate to be working with, you know, Fresno Madera Continuum of Care, which board I also sit on. Because I believe strongly, like everyone of you, that's why you're sitting where you're sitting. Is it the only way you make a difference is if you sit at the table where the decisions are made? And so now we in Ju- in July will start our new contract with, with DSS. And through that, now we're gonna be able to offer more resources. See, I know you guys are just thinking homeless, but you're not seeing what we see, that there are families coming in and they're saying, I'm gonna get evicted. I have a three-day notice and I don't have no money. And so the problem is, we don't have diversion funds. You know who that money was given to? Only to Fresno City. That's a problem. Why didn't it come into the county, right? So those are the things that we need you guys to help us with. You say you have funding for the homeless, then help us help those people. But you know, maybe we need to set up a system.
Let me just stop you right there. Very stirring, inspiring words, Pastor Delphina. Is everybody good with taking a quick five-minute break and coming back? I don't think we're ready to conclude this yet and people are stirring around. So we'll take a five-minute break and come right back and continue with Delphina. A lot of people that want to speak. All right, we're back and we're gonna continue with Delphina's talk right now. Would you like to continue?
Yeah, I was just saying, so the funding for rental assistance was given only to the city of Fresno. So that funding only exists for them. But so it's something that we can come together on and work on. It's because we ain't asking, right? Because, you know, when we sit on the Fresno Madera Continuum of Care, I mean, we have an amazing panel of people and they have done everything to bring help into Selma. That's why, you know, I was allotted these grants. So we need to do more about working with the city. I myself need to do more about working with you guys and you guys with us so that we can come together and make this happen, you know? Right now, we are definitely looking at Ju- July 1st, when we have new funding that has come in and it's come in now as Selma comm, as the official holder of it. I'm no longer subcontractor. I hold the grant now. And so that funding will be used. There is some diversion money, but there is not enough to be able to plug the hole that we need to plug in that sense. And so if the city has funding that's gonna be directed to, to homelessness or maybe preventing homelessness, because this is what I'm seeing, truthfully, Mayor. It is a huge problem right now, preventing the homelessness. I am pulling from so many different resources right now to prevent people. For instance, I had a woman come in, single mom, one child. She pays $1,800 rent. She makes $2,400 a month. She had one hiccup. Her car broke down. Because her car broke down, she needed a car to get to work. She had to use some of that rent money. And now she's behind and she's looking at a three-day eviction. So what's gonna happen to her? Luckily, I was able to talk to the landlord and because of who we are, they were able to, we were able to work out something for her so that they pulled back that three-day notice and no longer gonna evict her. And the landlord is okay with what's gonna happen next and not gonna evict her. But that's just one of the many cases that we have, you know? We do keep track of everything we do. Of course, I don't report it to the city, which I believe I should. You know, I should come in and give you guys an accountability of what we're doing and I'm willing to do that. I'm willing to bring you guys that information so that you guys can see what work we're doing. Because to you, it's behind the scenes, you don't see it, right? But we are plugging the hole. The number to your homeless right now in in Selma, 72. That's what your number is that we have counted. How do I know that? Well, because every single one of them run through our, our organization. They come either for showers or for hot meal, for clean clothes, you know, for different reasons. They come to get their DMVs. They come and get their ID, birth certificates. So we're, we're tracking. We know what we have in Selma. And where our goal is we know which ones are addicts and it's not all of them. It's not. So those, we begin to immediately work with to say, hey, we have Teen Challenge. We are the, the, the source in Selma. So I got certified with Teen Challenge because the bottleneck was now we gotta get you to Fresno. So I can do that there and from there, we do all the paperwork, take them to get their doctor's appointment, get everything done that we need to do and drive them into Teen Challenge, you know? Today, we're driving one into CAPS. So, you know, just in the last week, I've drove two into a rehab program. So we're minus two, right? And that's not counting all the other things that we have done, all the holes that we have plugged for people not to become homeless. So one of the things that I'd like you guys to consider is, you know, maybe diverting some of that funding for Selma, right? I report to you. To keep people from becoming homeless. We've got to plug the hole. It's a big hole. And people are hurting. You may or may not know this, but one of the programs that I did bring in is to help people pay their PG&E bill. We can pay up to $1,000 of people's PG&E bill. What do we do by, what do we, how I teach them and counsel them and says, okay, now, here's what we do is because there's like, but I can't pay my rent. I said, look, I'll pay your PG&E bill on Friday, come here to get food and take all that money and throw it at your rent. So we're helping them think of, oh my gosh, I didn't think of that, right? So changing how they think, helping them manage that money better and looking at how are you spending it? What is happening? How did you get into this scenario? It's not just, yeah, I'm gonna write your landlord a check. Oh, no. I'm asking them questions. Why? So that I could see what's the trend? What's the reason? What's happening?
Thank you, Delphina. I really appreciate it. Thank you for your comments. I'm just in the interest of time. I know we all have our day we need to get back to. We haven't heard from Mr. Dylan McCollough yet. Would you like to weigh in? We haven't heard from Mr. Dylan McCully yet. Would you like to weigh in on this topic, sir?
Good morning, Mayor. There was City Council, Dylan McCully with the, oh, I can move closer. Dylan McCully with the County Administrative Office. I am the new homelessness program manager there. And so our office is responsible for coordinating the homelessness response across the county. So that is coordinating with our various departments, with the various jurisdictions throughout the county. So that is both the, you know, county departments as well as the cities across the county. And so that, that planning effort manifests in a, in a number of ways, right? So that is identifying priorities of the Board of Supervisors and, you know, communicating that to the cities, but also, you know, receiving input on, on those priorities. In the past, our office has developed homelessness priorities that were adopted by several of the cities throughout the county that, that shape the, the implementation of the county's homelessness response programs. So primarily the funding for those programs goes through our, our various departments. So through behavioral health, social services, to some extent, public health and public works. And those efforts are, are shaped by the, the board's priorities for those funding. So, you know, my colleagues here have, have alluded to some of their services. These services are funded through the, the county departments. So through Department of Behavioral Health, through the Department of Social Services, ensuring that, you know, services, we, we try and make services available throughout the county. It's, it's a large geographic area, but we're mindful that, you know, there are needs across the county. So that's, that's kind of one role of our office is, is coordinating that effort. And I, I would also want to mention, because I, I know that last year, a community meeting was hosted here in Selma regarding the Homeless Housing Assistance and Prevention Grant, round five, that, you know, we were seeking community input on the, the priorities for that funding, right? And so those priorities gathered here and, and throughout the county informed some of the funding and policy decisions for that grant. So I know here in Selma, in fact, this was the highest response of our in-person meetings and, and the priority here was, was really for those permanent housing interventions, right? So both the development of permanent housing, which is a little difficult with this funding source, but also for rapid rehousing, right? So that rental subsidy, case management, ongoing assistance to help people get placed into existing units and then provide those wrap services to make sure that they are stably housed. So that sort of manifested in the, the county and COC. So I will just say that the, the county and the Fresno Madera Continuum of Care apply jointly for these funds. So these funds are braided together. They are directed in a coordinated fashion, which means that we have a, a larger pot to work with to, you know, serve folks across the community. So the, the funding plan for HAP five includes, which the total grant was about eleven point seven million dollars. And that includes three point two million for rapid rehousing, one point two million for prevention and diversion, and then five point nine million for interim shelter and, and a few other allocations for, for administration and other supportive services. So I, I want to, you know, make it clear that, that the input we received, you know, directly influences how, how those funds are directed, right? We're, we're showing that, you know, we're, we're listening to the community and implementing this both within, you know, the, the context of this funding, but also being mindful of the funding that's available throughout the community. And so as I mentioned, it's difficult to use these dollars for the development of permanent housing. But there are funds, you know, made available through HUD or, you know, through the CDBG grants, home ESG that, that can support, maybe not ESG, but home and CDBG that can support development. Typically, these, these funds need to be used in conjunction with other funding sources, right? So tax credits, other grants, private donations that make it possible to, you know, really stand up a, a, a permanent housing development. But those grants can also be used to create, you know, the, the supportive services or the supportive infrastructure around those developments. So, you know, wastewater, for example, is, is oftentimes a barrier to new development in some of the smaller communities. CDBG can, can be used to, you know, support those, those projects. So that's, that's.
Good question for you, Mr. Coley. Do you work with these other groups that are here? It seems like you, all you guys, all you groups work together.
Yes.
All connected.
Right.
All connected, the Continuum of Care.
Exactly.
So say someone will come into the multi-agency access point and need housing after Pastor Vasquez sent them over to you and then maybe you would contact you or you to get them to rapid rehousing, like immediately? And then maybe if they needed transitional, who would they contact after the, the rapid rehousing ran out?
Usually they stay with a case manager.
They would be assigned a case manager?
For rehousing.
Okay.
So they would, I usually will manage them all the way through until they get on their feet and established.
And then they need to eat. So where do they go when they get, you know, say they go to a hotel in Fresno that's for the homeless? Where do they, is there, are there, is there, are there meals planned there for the mission?
Yeah, so Pavarello House, of course, serves meals, you know, three times a day. Typically, folks that are receiving homeless assistance are also eligible for CalFresh, right? So the, the California sort of food stamp program that gives them access to purchase, you know, food, you know, through, through that assistance program.
And if I may add, recently I've been inviting other agencies to do outreach with us. So that's Department of Social Service and the California Food Bank. California Food Bank can help sign up those that are unhoused with food stamps as well as DSS. They'll provide general relief, Medi-Cal and food stamps and any other services that DSS can offer, linking up their case to make sure that everything is in order. So we, we tried to link them with that, with that food stamps, you know, to, so that they can, so that they can eat.
Okay. I think we have a number of people from the public who'd like to weigh in. Mr. McCully, did you, have you spoken?
I, I just want to add one more thing because I think it's important to, to make you all aware. So one of the primary other functions that our office carries out is the encampment resolution service in the unincorporated areas of Fresno County. So this is something where we work with King's View as the outreach provider to engage with folks that are in encampments, again, on either public right of ways or if they're on private property but in unincorporated areas, that's, that's a whole code enforcement process. But I, I want to make it clear that that's, that's part of what the county does through the administrative office is, is coordinate that encampment response. So that, that is an effort between King's View Outreach, the Sheriff's Office, Code Enforcement, Environmental Health to, to address those encampments. And that does involve, you know, a noticing process when they're on public property and working with private homeowners, landowners to really address the, what constitutes a code violation for, you know, having encampments on private property, working with them to, you know, remove trespassers. Again, there is a noticing process, so it can be a little protracted, but it, it is, it is something that we coordinate through our office. And there is a, there is a reporting tool on our office's website that allows members of the community to identify a homeless encampment and that triggers our response to, to triage that report. And if it is, you know, not within the unincorporated area, we coordinate with the jurisdiction. So with cities, with Caltrans, railroad, irrigation districts to make sure that that encampment is addressed. So I just wanted to identify that.
Thanks for that clarification. Every person I've spoken to in the city of Selma has said they feel for the homeless people who are unhoused. They feel for their plight and want to help. However, not a single person I talked to wanted a, a homeless building or an encampment shelter right next to them. So the not in my backyard argument, I mean, it's just, it's just there. Are there any plans, and I also get this suggestion right after, and maybe we'll hear it again today from the public when we go to them in two seconds. Is there any plans, are there any plans from the county to put up a building, a homeless shelter where the unhoused can go, which will have a kitchen, which would be a facility on county property, where all the member cities, the fourteen cities, can send the folks who are homeless and who agree to go and stay there? Are there any plans to build a shelter such as that?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
And, and I do want to reiterate, as I mentioned, the, the interim housing funding that is in the HAP four grant that we applied for, that will be procured, right? So, so there is an opportunity there for, you know, agencies within the community to apply for that funding and, you know, put that towards a shelter like you're describing, but it, but it is a matter of, you know, going through that procurement process.
Last question. Does the county, did they buy a hotel for the homeless just like Fresno did? Does the county have a hotel or two that they use to shelter the homeless with some ARPA funds or some COVID funds?
So not, not in recent years. I think the earliest iteration of the Home Key Grant, they did partner with the Fresno Housing Authority, but this was, you know, several years ago now. So I don't think they have a recent development.
Got it. Thank you for that.
I had gotten some word through King's View. Next fiscal year, they do want us to start kind of helping the unhoused get into motels. Not too sure which motels have agreed to that, but we're still working on that. So I can get back to you when things get more fleshed out about that.
Appreciate that, Andrew. Thank you. With that, we will open up this matter to the public. I think the people who sat here and listened, there are several who would like to offer their input on this. Please come forward.
I, I had a road bump in life. I had a job. I had got COVID. I got fired. I couldn't get unemployment. I was homeless. I was going through depression. I became an alcoholic. And I didn't know there was these resources. We were talking about connecting until I finally heard there was a connection in Selma which came from MAP to Delphina. Get help. That was one to not be out there. But when you hit a road bump in life, sometimes it brings difficulties in our own lives. I lived in my truck. I had too much pride to ask for help. I didn't want that help. I had pride. Sometimes people that are out there, they have their prideful. They're not all drug addicts, but then you, you get involved in the drugs also, the drug scene. And I got tired of it. I reached out to Delphina. That changed my life. I wanted that change. I didn't want to be out there no more. I could have still been out there. I could have probably been all dirty, all shit, unshaven, probably long hair, hands all dirty. Chose not to. And it takes a lot. Make that change. Takes a lot to be disciplined. A church that's open to help you, to show you the love. To understand it. Getting a motel for them. If you're not going to show them the love and you're not going to show them about the, how they should, could change and live a better life, they're just going to use that as a mug. They're going to be partying in there. There's got to be some kind of resolution. If you guys are talking about getting a place and getting this for them, there's got to be some kind of counseling all the time, reminded, show them. Because when you remind them over and over and over, one day they're going to get it like I did. I got it. I know a lot of the homeless that go there. I helped them out too. I talked to them. They see the change. They see the cleanness. They want that. But yet sometimes they don't want to leave that other stuff. And by talking to them nicely, not forcing it down their throat, but make that change. And there's a lot of them coming to, to the Lord there. There's a lot of them changing their lives, but yet they still want to be out there. But just because they want to be out there, they're going to see more of the change. They're going to see more. Some just want to take advantage of the program. Some want to just take advantage of, oh, I'm going to get a place. It's going to be hot. It's going to be air conditioned.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez. That's your three minutes. God bless. Next, please. Come on up.
Hi, Teresa Salas. I do have a question. What ordinances does the city have in place about camping, overnight parking, things like that, that, that the police use to keep the streets clean or to keep the parks empty? Or do we have things like that? I, you, you mentioned the, the camping ordinances that, that the city, the police uses, but what specifically do we have here in, in the city? And then also, does the city have any plans to coordinate with all these other agencies? Counsel, order something where everybody would work together to share their resources with the city involved, not just the agencies, but with the city also to be able to, you know, people know where City Hall is. They might not know where some of these other agencies are to come here and we could say, yeah, this is where you go or have somebody here coordinating with them also. Does the city have any plans for anything like that?
Questions? Come on up, Chief.
So, so all of our officers know exactly where these locations are and I've kind of annotated or memorialized those in this PowerPoint. With regards to the ordinances, you know, we have seventy-two hour parking ordinance which allows for our street sweepers to clean the streets, ensure that, like when floods come, that debris, that the water flows freely, gets to the storm drains to move that water, so don't create flooding. And that's really one of the biggest purposes for the seventy-two hour towing, but that also helps us address any issues, I guess, that Mrs. Salas might be speaking of. But we don't have anything with regards to camping. Our parks close at ten PM and open at six AM for everybody, not just any specific portions or community members. It's from ten PM to six AM. It's closed. So that, that's kind of, that's just, that's been on an ordinance for, for many years now. And it, it, with regards to, so those are ordinances that we use. Again, we've not created anything specifically to address unhoused, the unhoused population. Again, I don't think that'd be ideal.
Chief, just, oh, go ahead.
Oh, just really quick. Okay, so the unhoused individual that puts his tent at Brettlinger and stays the night there, he's not supposed to? Because that was brought to my attention.
So if, if someone calls the police department, our, our parks closes at ten PM to six AM.
Okay.
And just to add to what Chief Akra has mentioned about the ordinances, we also rely on our ordinances that regulate obstruction of, of public right of ways, sidewalks and, and different other public easements. And then our public nuisance abatement procedures. So if there's, you know, if there's something that's deemed to be, you know, a public nuisance, whether there's a lot of trash, whether there's something there on the public or private property that shouldn't be there, we rely on that ordinance as well through our code enforcement and law enforcement when necessary.
Anybody else?
I just want to say first of all, good morning, because nobody greets anybody but good morning. I was brought up, like you get up in the morning, you say good morning. So good morning. I work for Fresno County Department of Social Services.
Your name, sir?
Santiago Osaguirre. You, you should, you should know by now. Twenty-two oh nine Thompson, Selma, California. I worked for Fresno County Social Services for twenty, thirty-two years and I just retired three years ago. When I was working there, there are programs through Fresno County Social Services that help the homeless and they do have a diversion program. If a family comes in, let's say they're going through, going to Colorado and their car breaks down, guess what? We help them and, and then we'll fix the car. Vamonos, you're in a way. You run out of money, guess what? We give you, get money to continue your trip. Or social workers through the employment development, not employment development, employment services, they also have vouchers. You know, if it's an emergency, they call it, you know what? We need somebody. They come in. They do a three day voucher, whatever they can help, they put them up. But they have a lot of services that weren't even mentioned here. So they have a lot of services that weren't even mentioned here. And my next thing is, kudos to you all. But what took you so long? This has been an issue that has been going on forever. And everybody's been asking what's going on with the homeless. What are we doing? Thank you to all the people that are here, especially Delphina. I think she's running a wonderful program, and we need to see about helping them. You know, how wonderful would it have been to give them, give them the $300,000 we're paying for the animal shelter? You know, just saying. I know it's a dead horse, but sometimes you got to pet it and see if it wakes up. Other than that, I just want to say thank you for bringing it together. It's about time. And like somebody said, we don't need to try to hurt them or or do like Vegas where they they all brought them to Fremont, Fremont Street out there. Because if you go to the strip, there's no homeless there. Because they pick them up and they drop them off. Now, if you go to Fremont over there, Old Town Vegas, guess what? There's hundreds of them on the streets everywhere. It's a big mess. We don't want to let it get to that. You know, another thing I want to say, there's a couple of cities that have tiny home communities. You know, and that might be an idea to look at. I think one is in California and then somewhere else. But their tiny home communities have all the tiny homes in the middle. They have communal areas, you know, for cooking and cleaning and whatever. But something to look at. And I would like to hear some of Delphina's ideas, like somebody mentioned. She wasn't given the opportunity to mention some of the ideas she had. But thank you, guys, for doing such a wonderful job. And like I said, I dedicated my career to help people. And I think that that's what we need to do here in Salma. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Jim Ables, seventeen oh one, Dinuba. First, I want to thank the everybody's being here today to give the input of what is happening in everybody's communities, not just Salma. I thank them, and I also thank the chief for his report as well and the staff that helped them put it together. Thank you. And the reason why I'm here is too is, you know, I manage several properties for some property owners. And my job is to to make sure the clients feel safe and their customers feel safe. So what I what we have done together, working with the property owners, we put up surveillance cameras. And I'm on, I'm usually on site. I have, I use the, I use Delphina's tell, help. Thank you, Delphina. I've used her, her, her program as well. I use MAPS program, MAPS program, program. You know, I'm always getting extra cards. So but and also we have not, I haven't used your help yet, but I've reached, I have other people had reached your program through my contacts, okay? I've learned in in the past. My parents taught me, says, son, problems are always going to be there. You have to face them. And you got to find a solution to fix it, son. And don't kick it down the road. That's not the solution, son. Solve it. And in my life, since I manage a property, my job is to make sure all the people are safe. And I've done that. I've used these programs to help the people. When I took it over, it was a mess. Thanks to the people that that are here today, I've used their program. And thanks to the police officers, how many property owners want to make sure that their 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 clients are safe and and they're deal. And the county workers were at one time weren't safe. But now they're safe. They walked the whole building because they have cameras now, surveillance. I actually talk to the homeless or issue whatever. I find I identify what their problems are. Alcohol, drugs, or actually homeless. And I I address those issues with with thanks to the help of the county workers and MAP program and Delphina program. I utilize their their talents. I learn from them how to reach out, get them off the street. Because everybody's at one life got family members that have been in that situation. I had family members. I get it. I understand. You just can't, you know, run away from the solution. You got to deal with it. And I'm the kind of person that I'll try to get them off the street when I can. It might take them four or five times, like that gentleman said back there. Yes, I had one gentleman.
Thanks for your comments, Mr. Ables.
Thank you.
Anyone else with a comment at this time?
Good morning. Rachel Ortega from Orion Square. My comment is first of a health concern. I don't, I was made aware of this when I was receiving my teaching credential. And we had nursing students in there. And they asked us, we all had our hepatitis shots, and we were hepatitis. Hepatitis can be active for 30 days. All it takes is for somebody to come up here, have hepatitis, put their hands on this podium, you go home, you rub your eyes, you could contract it. We have homeless individuals sitting on the benches. We have homeless individuals on the steps of the post office. We have individuals, we don't know what their status is, and there's no cleanliness concern with regard to the to the contagiousness of hepatitis. My concern here is I I have taken clothes to Delphina. I have taken people to Teen Challenge. I have driven people up to Eureka and back and to the facilities in in Chapter to Teen Challenge. I just got through coming from Caps Word, the men have no shoes. I took shoes over there. They have no shoes. They have no clothing. They have fifty-three men, individuals. They come in with the sheets from the hospital gowns. And I have been doing this since I was sixteen years old and able to drive. My concern now is you cannot go to Circle K and get gas without being accosted by an individual. And now he's he's kicking cars. Somebody left a backpack at my sister's house that is behind the high school, where my granddaughter, who's six years old, is babysat with her cousins. And when I called, when my sister called me, said she left some home unhoused person left a backpack there. I went there with gloves, put a mask on, opened it up. It had Narcan in there. It had drug paraphernalia, and anybody could have got into that. Anybody walking home from the high school, from the grammar school, could have got into that. Now, the police officers did arrive. They were very quick. They opened the backpack without any gloves or masks, even though I said there was drug paraphernalia in there. And the guy came back later to claim it. So he was banging on her door later when she got off from work. When I went to the post office late at night, there was a man sitting on the steps, and he's smoking crack. And he asked, and he blew it and said, do you want some? Now, when I posted on Facebook that this happened, I get attacked for it. Well, what were you doing at the post office at that time? You should have been going during the daytime. What about the kids that are in the ballparks? What about the people that are going to the library? What about the knives that were pulled across the street in the park from the library? What about the people who have rights and innocent children and innocent elderly that are exposed to people who are not, you know, who are not being helped in the preventative measures from Delphina? I had no idea she was doing all that. Commendations to everybody. Can there not be a website that for Salma where all of these resources are posted? Where everybody can go on there from Salma and they see something or somebody happening? And all of your resources, availability and what you have be posted on that website?
Thank you, Ms. Ortega. Anyone else with a comment?
Rose Robertson. I think this is a very good dialogue. I think at the end of the day, we we as Salma citizens are, we look back and we 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 know at least a dozen of Salma homeless people. We know them by their name. We know who they are. I think my concern is we want to help our Salma people first. So when we start bringing in Arizona people or other cities, I get it, you know, I get, we have a heart and we want to help our people. We've been giving back for over two decades, and we'll continue to give back because our heart's in the right place. But again, our hearts also in the right place to keep people safe and our kids that they are not exposed to a lot of things. So I think we just need to look at everything. I I think Delphina stated that they're open seven days a week. Is that 24 hours, Delphina? Okay, okay, so that's not 24 hours. We need a place that's open 24 hours because I believe you still live in Ridley. Is that correct? Is that where you live?
Dress your comments to the council.
So I'm sorry. I thought we were able to talk to them. Okay, so after hours, we we really need a place where we could send some of these people that are coming from out of town. Now, if other cities want to, you know, combine and we could all work together with other cities. I do understand that. I believe Teen Challenge is in Ridley. Is that correct? Okay, if Teen Challenge is in Ridley and we're starting to get some Ridley people here to help them through feeding them, and then, you know, they don't have a place to go, you know, hopefully, one day they will be back in Teen Challenge. Salma people will be in Teen Challenge. If and if I'm correct, that's a year, a whole year program that's free of service to try to get them off whatever drug they're on or whatever it is that they need. So they're right there, there's to together, two cities are combining themselves to help each other. What other cities? We have Fowler, we have Kingsburg, we have all these homeless people that are coming here to get fed. I believe if if I heard it correctly, there were seventy-four people here in Salma that are homeless. How many of those people are Salma people that are not coming from L.A. or other other areas? Because we all, and there there has to be a website where we can see where all the money is going and that's being transparent to these organizations and these programs. Because we all saw what happened in Los Angeles. A lot of the homeless money didn't go where it was supposed to go. So hopefully, we could continue to dialogue and continue to help our towns and most of our help these people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, good morning. My name's Trobita, Salma, California. And I believe we should take up Delphina on her offer. We need to empower the city, empower her, give her the, because she knows the homeless. I mean, she let us know the number. There's seventy-two homeless people here in Salma. She has let us know what the problem is. She has the grants. She understands. Chief Alcaraz can only do so much. He's, he has to abide by the law. He only can let his police officers do so much before the homeless are rights are violated. We all know this. The homeless have rights. And Salma doesn't need a lawsuit on homeless. So what we need to do is take Delphina's offer up and say, I know the homeless. I know what they need. I know how to get them help. Let's work together. Fresno got millions of dollars. Let's work, have Salma work with Fresno and help them understand what the what the needs are in Salma. Yes, we don't like it, but they're here. They're in our backyard. It it's one of those things that, yes, it is untenary. Yes, there are encampments. You know, we can talk about the SB ten eleven that was rejected with encampments that weren't supposed to be in parks, you know, and bus stations next to schools. That wasn't passed. So we know that California had, is this is an ongoing issue. We know that we need the help. We know that the homeless will always be here. We talk about housing. We talk about how they need the help. You know, we we heard from Mr. Ramirez, we heard, we heard his testimony. It's not until the homeless say, I want the help, that it's going to happen. So there's always going to be homeless. Whether it be Salma, whether it be Kingsburg, whether we follow, whatever city. We need to, I I feel like Delphina is our number one source. She knows everybody. She knows the homeless better than we all do. And I feel like we should, we should give her the empowerment that she needs and work with her so she can work with PD and work with the city and make sure that we're on the right track. So we feel safe. We're able to go to the post office. We're able to say, hey, you know what? I want to go to the Art Center and, you know, and say, I don't want to run into homeless. But, you know, she will help and empower the city and get that done. Get that on the right track. That's what I feel like.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else who'd like to say anything?
Hello, Marissa, Salma, California. I just want to say that, you know, we're talking about helping, you know, the homeless, and there are people just like us. And and I'm all for it. But it's not going to solve the problem. Delphina said, you know, her helping them out and everything. They're still here and they're here to stay. And it's just, you know, the population is just growing. I'm going to tell you two incidents that happened to me. One of them, I I went to a meeting at a library, the library at the Salma Library. And there was a homeless at the Lincoln Park that pulled out a knife on another homeless. And they were, you know, going to start fighting. So we called the police department. They came out right away and they handled it. And that was an incident there. The second one, on Mother's Day, I went to the cemetery and I was visiting my grandma on the North Cemetery. Right there where the railroad tracks are, there was a homeless and he started throwing rocks at me and my son. My son was with me. As I was paying my respects to my grandmother, I told my son, you know what? Let's get out of here. And that broke my my moment. So because he was cursing at us, he was throwing rocks at us. And, you know, he was just not, you know, just not in his right mind. We didn't know if he was on meth. We didn't know what was going on. So for our safety, we left because I told my son, you know what, let's go because he might jump the fence. We called the police department again. You know, kudos to them. They were there as soon as possible. But these are incidents that I know that I'm not the only one that's going through them. A lot of Salma citizens are going through. And, you know, I'm just, I I worry for for us, for our safety, for our children's safety. The library, there's so many homeless people there. What about our kids when they get out of school? You know, they're exposed to this. What if they get introduced to meth? Those are our children that we have to take care of. They're our priority. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Do we have anybody on the phone or online who'd like to say anything? With that, we'll bring the matter back to council. Do council members have any parting remarks before we adjourn today?
Yes, I do. I think just going back to the cert, all the resources that we have here in Salma, I have to say that we are one of the, one of the probably only city that has all these resources and for the homeless. So I want to thank all of you guys for being here as well. I think this is like we start, we stated over and over, this is a good dialogue. This is the first in an introduction. I'm thankful that Delphina came forward and was forthcoming that she did receive a grant. I think this is what's going to get the city and Delphina to possibly maybe work together. You come forward, you know, and you're forthcoming with what you've received, then that'll show us as a council how much we can resort to maybe a budget, you know, included in the budget for this program, like you stated, to plug the holes. What I would like to see is also create additional services. Because I'll tell you, I have a really close friend, Vicky Luna. And she does an outstanding job in Fresno with the Ladybug Lighthouse. And she gets a lot of women that have been in, that are homeless or in domestic violence situations. She doesn't just give them handouts. She teaches them how to do, how to do a work at a coffee shop and establish work experience. So it gives that individual that confidence that, hey, I can get me a job. I can go out there and get a job as well. We need to provide these kind of additional, so even if it's just, hey, before I give you three plates, can you, here's for tomorrow, here's three trash bags. Bring back these bags full of trash because I know you went out and picked up trash. Maybe if we can start something like that to help out our community that we should, we can see that it's not just give, give, give. They're also helping and getting these individuals maybe some experience. I think that would go a long ways because we got to start looking at how we can develop some of these resources into employment to help them get on their two feet. I think that would be a great start. Those are just my comments. Thank you.
I'd like to thank all the organizations that took the time off their day to come, especially Delphina. Thank you so much for giving us some enlightening what's going on and how things are working in our community. Every organization here has a task, and their task has been directed by their boards and tolling and and, you know, just volunteering. So for that, I thank you guys, and I thank our chief of police for doing a wonderful presentation and bringing it to our city. One of the key words and key words that I'm getting out of this is, and and I need to go back to Delphina because, you know, we we as elected officials, we 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 look at what our budgeting is, and there's no question. we, we, we look at what our budgeting is and there's no question that any of us are not entangled and informed and wanting to get this started because if you just look at the fact that we had budgeted some money for homelessness, but, you know, it, it's always like, oh, while you budget it, but what'd you do with it? Well, it's not that, there's a process and, 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 you know, in municipal governments, you learn that the process take a long time and it's not because you can't, it's because there's, there's just a process and a procedure. And, and key words, you know, it, it's amazing, love, compassion and reprogramming. Those are time, that's time. And for me, as an elected official, we don't want to just pour money or direct our staff and pour money and just, you know, throw a crap chute and say, "Hey, it's going to get right." So the, this here, I'm taking it as, as, as a beginning, right? And to get information, to talk to our staff and what set criteria, set policies, set, you know, and, and, you know, putting the money is, money is one thing to put the resource and the financial is there. But what are we going to do with it? How are we going to work with it? And one of the things I want to express to our staff is compassion, love, reprogramming. Because I get it, I get it. I coached football for eighteen years and, and it's breaking them down, building them up. So what we need to do is as we focus on a, a structured plan for the future, we all still need you guys, you guys are very important. So to me, this is just a wonderful beginning for me because it enlightened me for all you guys' resources, number one. Two, it gave me information. And three, it's going to be able to give me dialogue with my city manager and give direction to our staff. So for that, I thank you guys very much for taking time out of your day and thank you guys. And, and I also want to express my gratitude and thank to all my council members because of the fact that we're here and we're actually having dialogue. And it means a lot because it's a beginning. And, you know, it's not a one-way side, it's about actually listening and starting the process. I also want to tell the residents that are concerned, it's a concerning fact that, you know, I, I need to say this because I have a nephew that has problems and if he doesn't take his medication, he flips out. And we chase him around and thank you to our chief, chase him around. It's a hard fight, it's a hard fight. I was in the medical field in nineteen ninety, I'm old, right? And they got rid of PUF PAC, they got rid of those programs. And what they did is they told the government, they told actually the citizens that, "Hey, you're on your own." So those are the, those are the, that's actually what's coming back to us, right? Those are the, the residents that are lost out there, their kids have, Delphina, you said it best, if they ain't giving them that medication, he's on his own now. So those are not things that we brought to our table, those are things that have been brought to the table because of life. We just need to get, and you know what, thankful, we're here, we're having dialogue. But I don't want to take anything as negative, I want to take it as positive. And the positive is that you guys are all here and we're here and we're gathering information. And what we do in the future is going to be what we set our community, right? So thank you guys again, okay?
I just, again, wanted to say thank you. And Delphina, I, I know where you're coming from. I, I remember handing the keys to somebody that was living in a cave and, you know, gave him keys to his first home and, yeah, it took a minute, it took a while to try and get him to reprogram. So, you know, a lot of the individuals have a lot of wounds, you know, that they really have to heal from. And one of the things that, you know, I'm hearing and the word performance mentality came to mind. I wrote it down. We kind of have to get away from that, you know, because yes, you, you, you need to do something in order to do something, but we really have to steer away from that and know that the Father loves us regardless of, you know, what we have to do, right? So I really thank you for everything you do, every single one of you. Because it is not just one agency, it's not just one person. It takes a community to, to make a difference in order to help the population that, that needs help. And it, it all starts with understanding their wounds, you know, and, and helping them hear through that. You know, for the last, I don't know, eight months, I've been, I've been taking ministry class. And that's one of the root things is, is, you know, the, our identity, identifying our identity, identifying our wounds so that we can help others, you know. And so I really thank you and, you know, we're, I'm willing to help. You know, whatever we can do policy-wise, you know, whatever we need to do, but thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you guys for coming and sharing with us and enlightened us a lot. It goes back to saying, you know, we are the human race and we should be caring about this human race of ours. So thank you so much for your help.
You know, I'd also like to thank all the agencies and all the great organizations that came out. It's such a tough, tough, tough time that you have and that you, that you do. And very, very worthwhile and it's probably exhausting. Delphina, you're from Ridley. You know, you found a heart for, for Salma instead of Ridley, but maybe you're going to, you're going to open something up in Ridley one of these days, who knows? But thank you for what you do. I'd also like to encourage the city to get this information from everybody who's here and put it on our website just so that, you know, people have that resource that the gentleman mentioned. It'd be good to have this on the, the individual mentioned. It'd be good to have this centralized on the city website. I'd just like to say before we adjourn, there is a Russian writer Tolstoy who said, "You're never going to solve crime and poverty. You're never going to solve them. There are problems that will still, will, are just common to human beings." And homelessness is a subset of poverty and unfortunately, we're not going to solve it, but we can manage it. We have to manage it and that's why we're here today. So this, the number that we have, seventy-two forty-seven, we've had it for years and years and years. And I think, I think one of the reasons we're doing this again is addressing this as a council again is just showing our frustration as a city over it not getting better. And so many people out there, we have, for every great story, we have people who relapse and we have people who have gone back into the life. You know, in economics, they don't count people who don't look for jobs after six months because they're chronically unemployed. Unfortunately, people who are homeless and chronically homeless really don't want that solution. And so we're faced with people who, many of whom don't want the solutions that all these good people will provide. So what do we do as, as a city? For one, we crack down on the drug houses in Salma that are supplying the homeless with their meth. I know drug laws are pathetic at this point and it's catch and release, but we can at least go out and arrest them, we know where these drug houses are and we know who's doing this and cut off the supply there. Number two, I think we make sure that we know we are not encouraging people to be homeless in Salma. Some people are saying, "Oh, my gosh, you know, you have all these giveaways every day with all this food, you know, all these people. You're encouraging people to come to Salma." We're not doing that. We're giving the people who are chronically homeless a way to survive. That's what we're doing, but we're not encouraging and endorsing a lifestyle. Another person said something really telling. People can have fentanyl, people can be drug addicts, they can be sex offenders. We don't know, right? Because people are refusing help. So my last point, the laws. The laws are, you offer them, as our chief said several times, you can tell them, you know, "We can offer you help. These great people here, we can offer you help." If they refuse it, they don't have to take it. That needs to change, that needs to change. Let's hope that the Supreme Court rules in a way that will help us to enforce our laws and to tell people that if you're not, if you're out there and you're breaking the laws, you're going to be held accountable. We have Crespu in Salma now. So it's not just, you know, you have mental problems, "Hey, come get a meal, see ya." Now we have housing, we have therapy for people who have mental problems here, right here in Salma. So we are working on the problem. I think our question here and our conundrum as a council and our limited, what we can do is how do we spend this allocated money in the budget in a way that will help this problem and reduce the incidence? Help us manage homelessness, to make lives better, not just for the clients, the homeless, but our city as well. So we all feel like we're getting something done here. I mean, we all drive, we see them all the time. Who hasn't turned a corner and seen somebody? I went into work a couple of weeks ago, I had somebody sleeping on my doorstep, my building downtown. And I started, I felt terrible for him, but... So, I mean, we need to find a way systematically to take care of this problem. We have great people here, we have great minds here, we have the heart. I think we just need to look at multi-dimensional solutions to this. And I think what I mentioned the first time, cut off that drug supply. I think that's very important for us to do that in Salma. I thank everybody. Did you have one last comment?
I just wanted to mention a res, an op, a, a resource. Because it's really important, because several times people mentioned the library. And I know that there was a lot of drug addicts going to the library, using the computers, you know, printing their stuff. So to divert that, we purchased computers and printers so that the homeless could come to our facility where we can control. And because I was trying to keep them from the kids, right? Because there's a lot of kids that are not able to go. One of the calls that I received is, "My child can't go to the library because there's always homeless." So that gave me the thought. So just so you all know, that we do have computers there at the, at the office, at the church for the homeless, they're free to use. Of course, we're monitoring them, they have passwords. We have, you know, full access to what they're looking at so that they don't have to go to the library. And maybe we can work on something to completely divert the traffic of homeless going so that the children can now feel safe again. One of the moms said to me, and this is why I did it immediately, was she said her daughter, the restroom. Her daughter went into the restroom and there was, it was a homeless woman, but the woman scared the child. She came running out of the restroom. And so she didn't feel safe anymore. So I said, "Okay, here's what I'll do." So just so you know, and I don't know, maybe we can work on something to let them know that we'll, we'd be glad to take on that. You know, maybe we need to get more, more computers than what we have now. But they come now to apply for whatever it is. We, we have a person that helps them apply for jobs. You know, we're trying to get them to get like different programs that we know that exist. So that's one of the things that we do. The other thing is I sent the city manager, I sent you guys an email saying, "I'll be glad to be your warmest center." But I need the city to come behind me and help me with that because that's going to require us to have twenty-four hour. So I made, I laid that on the table because I know that I can manage it and I know what I'm doing. So I did send that email in last year and I never got a response on it. So I, I laid that on the table again. You know, we have to work something out. But certainly, the city needs somewhere for them to go and we can do that. But we need the city to get behind us on it.
And this is not an endpoint, this is a starting point to this discussion.
Mayor, and if I may, before we wrap up, I know we're getting short on time, but I didn't want to end, end this workshop without some clear actionable steps because I think that was what the purpose of this, of this workshop was. And I think over the next month or so, we're going to restart or reconvene the roundtable that we used to have that brings together all the resources and we'll be inviting all the resources that are present here with our community services director, our police chief, our code enforcement. And then, you know, Mr. McCully mentioned the Fresno County Board of Supervisors homeless priorities, which if the council recalls, we did adopt last year or the year before. And so that's going to be sort of the basis to the mayor's point about how is this money that the council is budgeting in the next fiscal year? How is it going to be spent? Well, it needs to be directed around these priorities that already have been determined that are necessary to be addressed. And so with discussions with our service providers, you know, Delphina for sure, but also MapPoint, Kingsview, PATH and, and DSS and other, other resources, there's ways that we can leverage that funding to make a bigger impact than the, you know, eighty thousand dollars or sixty thousand dollars that we have in the budget. And if it's more that's necessary, then we can seek funding, right? And, and develop those partnerships. So the next steps for, on the staff side, is to continue coordinating and strategizing those resources in that path forward to see how best we can spend that money.
What I'll be asking the community is, do they want us to build homeless housing here? Or does a community want us to find temporary solutions like hotel rooms? I'm going door-to-door here and I'm going to ask everybody, what, what do you want to see in the city? I think it's, it's up to us as citizens to come up with a solution for this. Thank you, everybody. With that, we are adjourned.